Seasons change, Lord. We know that the pollen's in the air, and we know that things are blooming. And, Lord, that's just another reminder, um, Lord, that Easter is just on the horizon. Lord, um, we just, uh, well, I pray now that you would bless us as we, um, discuss the needs of our city. Um, and we pray that we would always look to you for our guidance and our wisdom. Lord, I would pray for our military, we pray for the leaders of our country each and every day. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this the City Council meeting, board, City of Smith Station, Alabama, February forty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, six P M. A. standard time. Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you, Mr. Langston, for leaving the pledge. This time I establish a roll call vote to establish a call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Langston?
Here.
Mr. Cooley?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mayor Coppel.
Yes. Minutes from the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting will give you the hard copy as well as digital or any additions or corrections. If there are none, I ask for approval first and second.
Make the motion, Mayor Fred, that may be.
It's a doubt.
I got Green, Langston.
Green, Langston.
Mr. Green, being our representative, would you like to do the recognition that you don't want to go?
Good morning.
I have a pause and pause and a debate. Can you add them, add a, item eight, C. Public hearing. Why did I say emotionally, you said that?
Motion, approve.
Second.
You want to pose a discussion? I have roll call votes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coppel?
Yes.
You recommend a recommendation there?
I'm serious.
Yes, sir. All right. This comes from the City of Smith Station's Planning Commission meeting held on February seventh, twenty twenty-three. The Planning Commission of the City of Smith Station recommends to the City Council the following. Approve the annexation petition and pre-zone request for property located three sixteen Lee Road four sixty-four to R three High Density Single Family District Residential. Approve the annexation petition and pre-zone request for property located twelve fifty-seven Cummings Road, R one Residential Single Family. Approve the annexation petition, pre-zone request for property located seven eighty Road Avenue to R one Residential Single Family. Approve the rezone request of property located one-two-three Cynthia Drive from R one Residential Single Family to R three High Density Single Family District. Approve amendment zoning ordinance two thousand eleven dash seventy-five, section five point zero six, table for rented uses, home occupation permit, signed David Arwood, Chairman of the Planning Commission of the City of Smith Station.
Well, you've heard the deduction.
I make the motion.
We don't have to.
We asked, I didn't think you.
Yeah. Just an introduction to the council.
Right. At this time, I'd like to, uh, lump all the, uh, thingy together. Instead of, like, instead of individual, Mr. Langston.
I'm just happy to open the public.
No, we don't do that.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Langston, after the public hearing, wants to lump all thingy, commission, commission recommendations into one lump sum. That'll be item nine A, B, C, D. Anybody oppose? We don't have to take a vote. I'm just saying if you're against that. All right. It's cool.
Mayor Coppel, I might recommend that we suspend roads and ordinance and resolution so conduct business tonight.
Mr. Cooley has made a motion that we suspend roads and ordinances so we can move forward with voting tonight. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got Green.
I have Cooley, Green.
Any discussion? Let me have brought forth, I call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coppel?
Yes. Item eight, A, allocate funding for a city's inaugural rocking on the rails event. Item twenty twenty-three dash five oh four. I'm going to ask Mr. Bryce when he gets called, if he'll answer that for us.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash five oh four, a resolution to the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to allocate funding for the inaugural rocking on rails event scheduled for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Can I get a second, first and second? Motion, approve.
Second.
This is, uh, an event that, uh, is put together by our, our, the, the candidates. There's going to be an audio event, barbecue cooking, all tug of war. Um.
Music.
Music, uh.
Hands.
Bear knocking fighting, so on so forth. It's going to be, it's going to be a good day, uh, a good day for people to come together. And, uh, so, uh, I'm all for it. I'm excited about it. Any other discussion?
Is it going to be here? I know it's not, but what if it just happens to me?
Yes.
It'll be here.
It's going to be here. It's this day, one fucking right there as well.
Yes, sir. Mr. Deeper rent the stage, rent the sound system, and rent the so on so forth. We got a first and a second. Any other discussion? Let me have brought forth, I call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yeah.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coppel?
Yes. Item twenty twenty-three dash five oh five, purchase twenty sixteen Ford F two fifty from Aldi, Equipment Bureau surplus property listing. Mr. Bryce?
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash five oh five, a resolution of the City of Smith Station, Alabama, authorizing the purchase of a, I left off the people, I apologize for that.
This says the city does lack of this Aldi.
Sorry, could I?
That's okay.
Could I go back?
No, no, no.
Okay.
The purchase of two thousand sixteen Ford F two fifty for Aldi Equipment Bureau surplus, you do that for me?
Yes.
For a property listings. Can I get a first and a second? I'll explain something.
I'm going to put a second.
Stringer?
Stringer.
Yeah. Stringer, good. All right, uh, this is, uh, Aldi has a surplus section in Montgomery. So if county, city, state entity wants to get rid of their surplus, they send it there first to be waxed, primed, cleaned, and put together well. Then they offer it to municipalities and counties and stuff again. Then if it doesn't sell there, they send it to the auction. So we've been waiting in line for a good vehicle, a good dump truck. So this is a good pickup truck, F two fifty, that we need for our, our fleet to continue our trash business. This money is not coming out of the general fund. This money is not coming out of the general fund. This money will come out of solid waste because of it being a trash truck. And y'all know solid waste is just continued to accumulate, accumulate, accumulate. So this will not come out of the general fund. It's coming out of the solid waste fund. It'll be a solid waste truck purchase. So then, uh, this, this money will be coming out of there. And before we sign it, Montgomery will correct it tonight. So I'm going to ask for a vote, contingent on the corrections. We got a first and a second. Can I call for the vote?
You ready to make the call, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Now, I ask one thing. This vehicle is a huge truck. What year is it?
Two thousand sixteen. It's got around a hundred thousand miles. Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand miles. What is the cost of this?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, a hundred seventy dollars.
Thirty one thousand. Go buy you a huge truck down there, so you want to go.
And it's a what year?
Two thousand sixteen.
We priced it brand new, it was around sixty thousand.
Yeah, I, I guess my thing is, you know, I, I just have a tendency to not want to buy something over a hundred thousand miles. And, you know, if you're going through that, then I know it's an emergency right now. But I think sometimes, uh, we not, we get ourselves into buying by, by having to buy something because we need it right now.
And I, I, I'm going to politely agree to disagree because of the fact that, uh, we have forty miles of roads. The most we're going to drive in one day is ten to fifteen miles, like fifteen miles. So our bucket truck that has over a hundred thousand miles has not caused us one issue besides the high dollar line. That had nothing to do with it. The truck we got from the county, we've had issues from, but it was a gift. I understand that. Everything else that we have is pretty much random at fleet level. We have a brand new truck that we bought. This is just a truck, just a surplus plan to help with the trash route. So they're going to put trash in this truck. It's going to be pulling a truck, it's F two fifty, more than willing enough to do what we got to do. And to put a new truck in this environment that we're putting it in, it'll be foolish on behalf of the City Council.
Well, it might be in one sense. In another sense, you know, uh, you still got, uh, a truck that is. Uh, you might get two hundred thousand miles on it. But, you know, right now, our backs are against the wall. But, uh, I think somewhat along the line, we need to think a little bit ahead of the game and, and purchases and vehicles. And, you know, a new truck is what, forty-five thousand?
No, sixty. The same thing as sixty.
All right. Keep moving.
Yes, sir.
I'm just forcing my opinion.
Oh, I agree. I agree. And if, if, if a, if a new truck was not through the roof to the inflation, we'd be buying a new truck.
Well, we did buy one, and it took a year to get here, too.
Long way to the half.
Lost a year and a half.
Yeah, yeah. It's got a winch on the front end as well. All right, uh, let me find out. We got a first and a second. I have Cooley, Green, do you? No, I have Stringer, Cooley.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? Let me have brought forth, I call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley? And Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coppel?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing for the City of Smith Station. Public hearing. If you are willing to speak, you are testifying before a public body. Each member of this City Council, the City of Smith Station, is a public servant. Any false statement made to a public servant for the purpose of acquiring a benefit may be prosecuted by provided in Sector thirteen eight, ten point one oh nine Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five. Our city attorneys in present. My state lawyer limited to three minutes. And I'll ask, I will through each one of these ordinances, if you wish to speak in there, you'll have a timer. But I want to go through each one of these ordinances and then allow you to speak. So the first one, zoning ordinance submitted two thousand eleven oh seven five point five seven, rezone property located at one-two-three Cynthia Drive from R one Residential Single Family to R three High Density Single Family District. I have four people willing to want to speak here. Is there anybody who wants to speak on this one that's signed in? Thank you. Item B, zoning ordinance submitted two thousand eleven oh seven five point five eight, a minute, a minute, zoning ordinance table for rented uses for five, section five oh six, home occupancy permit, home occupancy permit. Is anybody here to speak on that? Item twenty twenty-three, one eighty-seven, annexation petition and requesting for pre-zone for property located in three sixteen Lee Road four sixty-four to R three High Density Single Family District. Is anybody here to speak on that behalf? Yes, sir. You, what's, uh, what's your name, sir?
My name is Harold Greer.
You're more than welcome to come to the podium, and I ask you to remember three minutes.
I have a timer right here. I'm Harold Greer. I live where we at right now, one eighty-nine Lee Road four sixty-four, for about fifty acres. About, and it's rezone all that stuff around us, where the young people do what they want, do what they want. But this young man said he wasn't going to mess up the pond back there, and all probably going to improve. And y'all see it now. They cut the dam and they, a water storm through somebody else, and it's always going out the stairway on the other side. And it's, it ain't nothing but a skeeter pond down there now. But that's what I'm here to say, we can, uh, they can raise the pipe up in it, or let it go out there, it's always with you. And my reason to say that's the way it's always meant is that the cause, that's what it means, the good down. Which is only time it ever got over on our side. Was that sending somebody, a yard man, away and get carried up before he go down.
Ms. Green, I appreciate what you said. Ms. Green, I'm sorry. I looked wrong. Ms. Green, I will allow him to speak, and allow, next to her speak, and allow him to answer the revote. Thanks, sir.
Do you, do you have any else, Ms. Green?
That's my daughter right there. It's up backyard. They, they let it see me, and they thought, are you sure?
Yes.
You sure, Jerry?
I'm Cheryl Burkey, and, um, my property backs up to the property that they want to annex. Um, and I, my house is on the lake, um, which is dragon tail, and it's just a string coming through there. And I was under the impression that that were going to improve it from the last time I had this meeting, um, but that is not been the case. Um, it is, the water is going out a different way. Um, and I really like to know just what all this means for me in annexing this high density in, what does it mean for me as a property owner? And I want to make sure that they're not going to use our dirt road for entrance into this new development.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Tyler about to, uh, to, uh, our findings on coordinator to come and plug in the play. If you will answer the questions that you know of, is the dirt road going to be construction entrance?
It's not a, it's not, not even a construction. Later will it be used?
It's not going to be accessed.
I think that there's probably some construction traffic that's used it today.
To get through to the phase, for right now.
Correct.
But not to their property, not on way to that, correct? Just on that first. I think it's two houses to the left, and then cuts back. That's the only way to access the lot at this moment. But once it gets developed, they'll be going through the front.
Correct.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you, Tyler. Chris, you've heard the two questions, several questions been asked, and I have a question for you as well, is, um, Tyler, before you sit down, can you explain what high density means to the, the people that asked the question?
So there'll be, if there are lot sizes or eight thousand and some change square foot, which is high density, which allows them to put the homes back there. They could do R one, it would just mean they'd have bigger lot sizes. So it's just the lot size that are right there.
So it's smaller lots?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, if you, the develop.
Three houses per acre, right?
Sir?
Three houses per acre, roughly.
Roughly, yeah. Um, the pro, most of our developments, Southern Oaks, Smith Crossing, um, Smith's Lot, they're all R three, um, developments.
Wow.
Um, it works best in that area.
To who?
To the residents.
Not to the locals. Now, it takes me thirty minutes to get out of my dirt road, and that way it used to, going in and out of stop and get out of.
Ms. Green, you finished your time, sir. Ms. Tyler? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Chris Rogers. Just a quick recap, uh, here for this annexation request tonight. We've got two, uh, pieces of property there for you tonight on Lee Road four sixty-four, uh, something like about six acres. Um, and, yeah, just to, just to answer a couple of the questions that have been posed thus far. There are probably some construction trucks using that, the Lee Road four sixty-four right now during the construction. But that's just about finished the entrance to the development that's currently underway, uh, and that will be utilized in the on that. But, uh, to shortly answer the question, there are, there's no plan to use Lee Road four sixty-four in any permanent way. Um, it is, it's dirt running, certainly not up to standard for any, you know, high volume traffic, so.
My question is, is, is whetlens, if they had a, a pond back there, um, you know how Alabama is about whetlens?
Yes, absolutely.
And y'all have, so what I'm hearing is, is train the, the whetland.
Yeah.
What is the plan to rebuild the whetland? Are y'all planning on using the property on the whetland, or why was the whetland drained?
Yeah, well, it was in the pond, it would be a whetland in and of itself, but the, the idea was that we lowered the pond elevation to use it for construction stormwater. Um, you know, for the, for retention, if you will, because I had to build another retention pond, so it was lowered. Now, completely honestly, you know, the pond was more shallow than what we figured it was, and so it looks like it is drained at the point. I've spoken with Mr. Greer a few times and told him that we couldn't arbitrarily keep the water in there and raise the dam because that would have an encroachment on to Mr. Greer's property, which we couldn't and wouldn't do. And, you know, so we, we had to lower.
What you're telling me is that there will be a pond again?
I don't know. I told Mr. Greer that if we could get a, you know, something worked out in hydrologically, if it worked, that we could put the water back in there, and it would possibly encroach on Mr. Greer's property, and that would work. I would certainly pitch it to Mr. Val and say that's something we could do, but I don't know yet if that's, that's possible, or something.
Because I know what a ditch pond is, and a retich pond is. There's not a retich pond, it's a ditch pond, so there's not going to be water in there, period.
Unless we can figure out how to raise it back up and put that pipe back at a higher level.
You understand that's his desire?
Yes, yes.
I mean.
His desire.
Mr. Greer's.
Is that it be a pond?
That it be a pond?
Yes, I, I do. Um, and, and we're trying to figure out the, the best way to try to accommodate the adjacent property owner, but allowing Mr. Val to use the property, you know, that he's purchased for the, for the reasons he's trying to. But, but like I said, fully trying to figure out a way to, to, you know, satisfy the, the adjacent property owner.
The man's had a pond for fifty years. And, and, and I understand it's about all his property, he do it up to with it. The man, I, you know, I'm, I'm for the citizen, I'm for what's right.
Sure.
And I understand retention and detention, I understand that. Um. It's changed this whole landscape in the back. Can you give me an answer, Mr. Val, in the next twenty minutes?
I, I don't know that I can. I'll, I'll certainly give it a shot, but I don't.
If you can, I'd request a table, obviously. Okay. I mean, if you're going to go outside, let me know.
I can, but I will tell you, I have, there's no way to run calculations to know, you know, it's, it's one thing to say the property owner will do it, but I can't promise you that even if he says he'll do it, hydraulic works out, that I.
Where will this water?
Tell you that I would do it, and then.
Where will this water, where will this water be going to? We, we all understand what the lake does. You have a dam, you have spill pipe, spill pipe goes out, the water goes outside of the, out of, and this water will be going on to Mr. Greer's property?
Yes.
Once it leaves the pond, if we rebuild the pond?
Yes, sir. It's, well, from what I understood, Mr. Greer liked me to this, that the pond from the previous landlord had went in there and clogged and, uh, stopped up the pipe to drain the pond, I just sense that it's built. And in doing so, it made it drain around a different way.
That's correct.
So what we're doing is, you know, I didn't even know that it was purpose of clog, but if part of this process back in water for one was approved, we, you know, fix that to drain correctly down the, the bottom end of the pond, down from the dam, so.
So, I mean, we don't, we don't have a pond anymore. I know the retention lane just dropped.
Yes, I mean, I think that current model is, I think it's.
That's going to remain, right?
Yes.
Uh, it's was built for.
There's no creek running into this pond?
No, so this pond drains in a mill creek. And I would just like to say, you know, this, the, the annexation that we're asking for, I know this is a part of that property, but, uh, what we've done with this pond was all approved was as far as the, the previous, so we're just going to use this pond as part of this next.
It's not a pond.
Or, or like this.
Yeah, it's not a pond. And I understand, I understand where he's coming from, so, I mean, we're the end all be all. I appreciate what the public mission does, so we've changed this man's, the whole landscape in his backyard. And, um. Mr. Green, could you stand up, please? Are you okay with, uh, not having a pond in the backyard, but having a retention pond, which would be dry?
No.
Did you fish in this pond?
Well, they were fishing there.
Did you fish in the pond?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Did you use the pit ponds for recreational uses, fish, and so on so forth?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But I understand the pond is not their property.
Yeah.
It's not their property.
Correct.
That's correct. I, I understand that completely. I understand that completely. Okay. Item, thank you, sir. I, just.
Yes, again, I, can I clarify one other thing? It's like I said, you know, the, what has been done has already been approved, so I mean, unless we need to go back and approve a lot, you know, that, that was approved a couple of years ago.
Correct.
So this annexation really doesn't involve a pond per se, but like I said, I, we're, we're having to try to do anything we can to, you know, to, to read what.
Well, I mean, you understand what I'm coming from?
Yes, sir.
I mean, total disregard for your neighbor?
Yes.
Hmm. And that's just what I'm saying, isn't it? I'm, I'm for, I'm for people of a prop, property, and I understand you're a businessman, I'm a businessman. But if you come. We got to think about this. And, and, and I'll leave it at that. Um, if anything, I might owe it to me, no. So, but, but I, I might be outvoted, so that's how that is. Um, item D, twenty twenty-three one eighty-eight, annexation petition, request for pre-zone of property located at twelve fifty-seven Cummings Road, R one Residential Single Family. Anybody have any discussion on that? Item twenty twenty-three dash one eighty-nine, annexation petition, request for pre-zone property located in seven eighty Railroad Avenue to R one Residential Single Family. Anybody have discussion on that? Yes, ma'am. I'm assuming you are Ms. Carol Stup.
That is me.
All right.
Yeah, I do want to, uh. It's more that I, I don't have a statement, it's more that I have questions because I don't know what this means to me. My property's butts up against this property, so I want to know what is going on and how is that going to.
All right, I guess, I think it's on a question, stay that.
Which one was it?
Uh, annexation petition, request for pre-zone property located in seven eighty Railroad Avenue to R one Residential Single Family.
This is just where they want to annex into the city. What does it mean exactly?
If I may, Ms., Ms. Patricia Sellers, who lives there, she has received city trash since two thousand eleven. That was the previous mayor administration. As you, area liberated, she knows, Lee County switched to the, the dumpster, the tan service program, just like we have here in the Smith Station of like in Auburn. Uh, in order for her to keep her service with us, she had to make a choice if she wanted to stay in the county and not receive our service anymore, or annex into the city and continue her service, which she is happy with because we also have to get bulkway service as well. This in no way affects you or your neighbors.
This has nothing to do with any kind of developing on the property of.
No, she just wants to officially be part of the City of Smith Station, and her, she has other property in the city ordinance as well. And she's, she's happy with us as our municipality, so that's the reason.
Are you in the city?
I guess I am.
You have green trench again, or blue trench?
I have the green trench.
She's. You're in the city.
She's.
Then you wasted your time.
Yes, well, because I did not know, and I didn't want, I didn't want the land to be developed in some way that I wasn't aware of.
She has no plans to develop it. She's.
Well, they're still in our mind, it's still residential.
Yeah, and she has a spacious property, so. Is there any other questions? I can help answer. Okay, yeah, but that's, if your neighbors have any questions, she had a lot of adjacent property owners, tell them to call me, but nothing's happening to y'all. She just wants to continue her service with the city, her track service.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good to meet you. General fund budget, uh, more to go with that. Uh, roll up, let them A, B, and C together, that's all, everybody? I closed it. Thank you so much for being part of that. Roll up, uh, items A, B, and C together. D and E together, all right? Well, you were crazy at the start, didn't you?
Sure did.
All public comments have been answered. There we go. All right. This changes things. Item nine A, zoning ordinance submitted two thousand eleven dash oh seven five point five seven, rezone property located at one-two-three Cynthia Drive from R one Residential Single Family to R three High Density Single Family District. Get a motion to second to approve. Make a motion.
I'll make a second.
Green, Langston.
Green, yes?
No, I may have that back.
You can.
So I found a few. Any discussion? Let me have brought forth, I call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yeah.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coppel?
Yes. Item zoning. Ordinance amendment two thousand eleven oh seven five point five eight, amend zoning ordinance table for permitted use of section five point oh six, home occupancy permit. You get a first and a second?
Motion, approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Let me have brought forth, I call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yeah.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coppel?
Yes. Yes. Item twenty-four three dash one eighty-seven, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Rice, are you ready to answer?
Yes, sir. Uh, ordinance twenty-three dash one eighty-seven, uh, an ordinance of the City Assistant Station Alabama granting the annexation petition for Mill Creek developers for property located at three sixteen Lee Road four sixty-four from A one agricultural to R three high density single family district.
You have a motion second?
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. uh, Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yeah.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coglin?
No. Twenty-three dash one eighty-eight, annexation petition, request for pre-zone property located at twelve fifty-seven Cummings Road to R one's residential single family. You have a motion second?
Make the motion.
That's two?
Second.
Any discussion? Another man brought forth our call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yeah.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coglin?
Yes. Item twenty-three dash one eighty-nine, annexation petition, request for pre-zone property located at seven eight railroad avenue to R one residential single family. You get a motion second?
Motion for a second.
Lanson, Jackson?
Uh, second.
Any discussion? Another man brought forth our call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yeah.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Coglin?
Yes. Item ten eight, general fund budget statement from, uh, ending January thirty-first.
Yes, sir.
Hey, everyone, um, start on page one of the January twenty-three P and L report. Start with the income portion of this statement. Total property rental income for the month of January twenty-two-three was five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars thirty-eight cents. Total ad form tax income was eighty thousand forty-two dollars fifty-five cents.